Let's call the Talent City Council regular meeting of June 18th. Do order, please. Roll call.
Counselor Coley.
Here.
Counselor Panemroff.
Here.
Counselor Medina, Pesteza and Byers not present. Counselor Medina, apologies. I know she is present online.
Yeah, I'm here.
Apologies, Counselor Medina. Counselor Perry Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Ayersflood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda or any recusals. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none. Any recusals? Seeing none. Item three, 3.1 is the proclamation declaring June 23rd through June 29th, 2025 as National Pollinator Week. And do want to acknowledge and recognize that Gerlinda Smith is on with us tonight. Great leader in in these efforts in our community. So with that, I'm going to read the proclamation designating talent for Bee City USA. Whereas the goal of Bee City USA is to promote healthy, sustainable habitats and communities as bees and other pollinators. And whereas bees and other pollinators around the globe have experienced dramatic declines possibly due to a combination of habitat loss, excessive use of pesticides, and the spread of pests and diseases and grave implications for the with grave implications for the future health of flora and fauna. And whereas cities and their residents have the opportunity to support bees and other pollinators on both public and private land. And whereas supporting pollinators fosters environmental awareness and sustainability, and increases interactions among community stewards such as commercial and backyard beekeepers, farmers, children, educators, naturalists, gardeners, plant nurseries, municipalities, neighborhoods, garden suppliers and clubs. And whereas the economic benefit of bee friendliness are healthy ecosystems, insect pollinators are required for pollination and reproduction of about 85% of flowering plants globally. Plants that are vital for clean air and water provide food, fiber, shelter for people and wildlife, and support the insects that pollinate our crops and form the basis of food webs. Increased vegetable and fruit crop yields due to bee pollination. Increased habitat for natural enemies of crop pests and therefore reduced need for and costs associated with pesticides. Increased demand for pollinator friendly plant materials from local nurseries and growers. And income earned by beekeepers and others through the sale of bee products, beekeeping equipment and supplies, and hive rentals for pollination and heightened prestige and premium asking prices for place-based honey, which enhances the visibility and reputation of its community of origin. And whereas the city of talent supports creating ideal pollinator-friendly habitats that include diverse and abundant nectar and pollen from plants blooming in succession, clean water for drinking, nest building, cooling, diluting stored honey and butterfly puddling. Areas where pesticides used carried out with least effects on pollinators. Areas comprised of native species of annual and perennial wildflower shrubs, trees and grasses. Designated pollinator zones in public spaces with signage to educate the public and build awareness. Safe and humane removal of bees when required. Whereas in order to enhance understanding among municipal staff and the public about the vital role of pollinators, pollinators play and what each of us can do to sustain them. The city of talent agrees to meet the following standard required of all Bee City USA affiliates. One, establish and maintain a subcommittee under the jurisdiction of the City of Talent Parks Commission comprised of residents and staff to assemble and dismantle. Excuse me, to assemble and disseminate information on topics of pollinator-friendly habitat and policies to municipal departments, residents, businesses and developers. Two, pass the Bee City USA resolution. Three, publicly acknowledge the community's commitment to install, maintain at least one authorized Bee City USA street sign in a prominent location. And B, create and maintain links on the appropriate page of the municipal website, which includes the municipality's Bee City USA liaison. Links to a PDF of this signed resolution and the Bee City USA website. And summaries of the pollinator-friendly activities the municipality has undertaken or accomplished in the previous year. Four, commit to annually celebrating National Pollinator Week, third full week of June, or some other appropriate occasion through events, proclamations and promotions that showcasing municipality's commitment to being a Bee City USA affiliate. And five, commit to annually apply for renewal of the community's designation and submit a report to Bee City USA activities following the format provided. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Talent City Council that the Talent City Council accepts the designation and commits to the standards of Bee City USA. Thank you, everybody. Let's see it. I do want to mention for the record that we, Talent was the second Bee City USA. Did I just read the, I did. Boy, I'm on, I read the resolution instead of the proclamation. Oh, my God, you poor people had to sit through all of that.
It sounded good.
Oh, yeah. I do want to say, though, that we were the second Bee City USA for the record. And the first one, of course, was the city that developed the program in the first place. So we were really the first city to sign on. I'm really proud of that. I am going to read the proclamation. It's not that long. And boy, to Gerlinda, she's probably taking note of all the things on the resolution that we need to get busy doing. So where the proclamation is, whereas pollinator species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply. And whereas pollinator species provide significant environment benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse urban and suburban ecosystems. And whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees, plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas for decades, the city of talent has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways as well as wildlife habitats. And whereas the city of talent provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments. Now, therefore, I, Darby Ayersflood, on behalf of the city of talent, do hereby proclaim the week of June 23rd to June 29th, 2025, as our city's observance of National Pollinator Week. And the city of talent as an affiliate of Bee City USA urges all residents to recognize this observance. There. That's better. I'm going to go ahead and sign this and hand it to the recorder. That was, that's the length of proclamation that I remembered. I thought, for a minute there, I thought, my, my, Gerlinda's been building up the proclamation a little bit here. Okay.
Add in a fun fact.
Please, Counselor Coley.
I saw today that Talent Garden Club certified its 90th Pollinator Garden in the city of talent. So 10 more and we get to 100.
Gosh, 10 more and we get to 100. That is amazing. Would you hand that, signed proclamation to the city recorder? Well, thanks, everybody, for sitting through that long-winded. But it's kind of good to review that resolution again. At least that's what I'm going to tell myself. All right. Item number four is public testimony. Is there?
Record. I think item number three, there might be community announcements.
Oh, yeah. Are there any community announcements?
I was not prepared for community announcements. The only thing that I was thinking about is to remind folks that we are the, we have moved to moderate fire danger. And if you want updates on those regulations, that's available at Southwest Oregon Fire. We're going to add some information to the city website about that. Currently, if you have a green law, it's okay to be mowing it, but the restrictions are gone. And folks need to be especially careful if they bring anything with brown brass.
Great. Will we have anything in the talent news and review about that?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I think so. Yep.
Great. Member Coley, did you have your hand up? Member Perry Miller, Counselor Perry Miller.
Thank you. So I just wanted to quickly just re-announce that the second Talent Artisans and Growers Market coming up next Friday, the 27th, starting at 5:00 PM at Old Town Park. And then since Counselor Byers is not here, I thought I would just also do a shout out for the talent show, which is Saturday, the 28th, starting at 2, ending at 7 at various stages around downtown. Should be wonderful. I think she has 29 bands.
I'll just add to that, that also on June 27th is a kickoff event for our Stories Through Art, which will be right across the street from the Talent Artisans and Growers Market. We're making for a really fun robust program for that night. A lot of family fun stuff to do right across the street. Counselor Coley.
I just wanted to make sure the talent show got announced.
Yeah. All right. So now I'm moving on to item number four, public testimony. Do we have any speaker request forms?
Mayor, there have been no speaker request forms submitted.
Thank you, Hector. Item number 5.1 is the supplemental budget hearing for fiscal year 2024, 2025. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear input and receive questions from the community regarding a supplemental fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. If you are a community member, you can ask questions or make a comment. If you are in the room, please submit a speaker request form available in the hall. If you are with us virtually and wish to speak, when I open the public testimony, raise your virtual hand in Zoom or pressing star six to unmute if you are on the phone. I will call on you when it is your turn to speak. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:36 and staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This supplemental budget is driven by the need to correct our adopted budget. The, there were unbudgeted grant expenditures that far exceeded what was budgeted. They were mostly associated with a web tree planting grant, the Gateway Pier Project and FEMA wildfire mitigation grant. Since that exceeded the 10% threshold for a change in that fund, we are required under Oregon budget law to adopt, to adopt a supplemental budget in a public hearing. When you're doing a supplemental budget, there's also some smaller discrepancies that you have to be sure to address. If there are smaller discrepancies, you also have to address them. And those were a, an increase in personnel services in the street fund, which was primarily driven just by a more accurate allocation of existing personnel costs. And, and there was also a debt service increase in the water fund just due to an oversight in the original budget. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? All right. So at this time, I am opening the public testimony portion of the public hearing. So do any of the community members have questions or comments? Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Are there any attendees that? Well, and so seeing none, I'm going to close the public testimony. I'm going to close the public hearing and the record at 7:38. Is there any further discussion before I entertain a motion? Any questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Coley.
Move to approve Resolution 2025-122-R authorizing a supplemental budget adjusting and making appropriations for the city of talent for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2025-122-R authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment and making appropriations for the city of talent for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Counselor Coley.
Yes.
Counselor Panemroff.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yes.
Or Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. 6.1 is acknowledgement of the noise permit from the talent show music festival. 6.2 is acknowledgement of Together for Talent Committee meeting minutes of May 6th, 2025. Is there anything that council wants to pull out for discussion? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Cole.
Yes.
Counselor Panemroff.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yes.
Or Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item 7.1 is clerical correction in approved fiscal year 2025-2026 budget document. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The, there was a clerical error of $5,827 in the budget resolution as presented on and adopted on June 4th. Staff corrected that error and wanted to present it to council to make sure that there was no confusion in the future record, no misunderstanding from council of what staff had done. And so what staff is proposing in addition to letting you all know about that, that minor change of what was, what the motion was on June 4th is to also append this information to the June 4th minutes. So for posterity, it's clear what happened.
And is there any action to be taken?
This is an informational item.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is eight point, any questions before I move on? Next item on the agenda is 8.1 approval of supplemental budget Resolution 2025-122-R. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This, this is, you did just take action during the public hearing. I interpreted the, your city attorney's response to your question earlier this evening that that was just fine. So we did not derail you. I think this item is complete.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right. Item 8.2 is approval of purchase and sale agreement for 49 Talent Avenue. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a request to approve the city manager to complete the purchase of 49 Talent Avenue from Asante for $1.16 million. That purchase will be funded on a reimbursement basis from the state of Oregon under a community development block grant that the city received for $1.5 million to establish the Talent Community Resource Center. We have, we've reached an agreement with Asante. The price is more than 5% below what Asante had listed the property for. So they will need to take this, this purchase and sale agreement to their board at the end of July. And we anticipate closing on the purchase in early August. I think with that, I welcome your questions.
Questions? Counselor Coley.
Yeah, so the I can't remember how much money we got from the grant. $1.5 million from the grant and the property is 1.16. So can that remaining money still be used for improvements to the site or no?
Correct. Yes. This will, this will increase our budget for renovations to the site.
Thank you.
Counselor Panemroff.
Thanks. Just piggybacking on my favorite subject, solar panels. Could, could this money be used for those kinds of improvements?
The environmental review for the, for the grant has assumed that it would be all interior changes to the building. So I hesitate to say that it's, it certainly is not impossible, but it would be a significant amount of work. I think it would probably make sense to, to turn to that question once we have a good sense of what the tenants are and if we, if we have full need of all the, the balance of the, of the grant funds for for renovations to make that the interior space fully functional. But if there were additional dollars, I think that it may well be worth that couple of months of work and, you know, few hours, well, few tens of hours of work of the notices that would be necessary to revise the environmental record to do that.
Follow-up questions? Yeah.
The, just the follow-up question is interior of the buildings, could that include improving the efficiency of the heating and cooling?
It's.
Or weatherizing, that sort of thing?
Well, I, I think it, if it's, you'd be changing the exterior windows, probably not. He, internal system, mechanical improvements, yes.
Okay, that.
I believe so. I think that I suspect the chiller is on the roof, so that, that may be visible. But yeah, I appreciate the question. We could certainly investigate what, what are the opportunities to lower the operating costs and save energy.
Exactly. That's where I'm going. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hey, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Coley. Let's just get more and more interesting.
I move to authorize city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of the 49 Talent Avenue property for $1,160,000.
Second, we have a motion, a second to authorize the city manager to sign a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of the 49 Talent Avenue property for $1,160,000. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Coley.
Yes.
Counselor Panemroff.
Yes.
Counselor Medina.
Yes.
Perry Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Item 8.3 is update to council rules of procedure Resolution 2025-123-R. Staff.
Mayor and members of the council, you, you thought we were done with council rules. But of course, we found out that there were some things that we left out or have rethought since I was approved in January. And those are presented to you tonight. I've got, there's six proposed changes for you to consider. They're up on the, the screen for you, starting on page 63 of the packet. The first change is in C2, adding recusals to the portion of the council agenda for additions and corrections to the agenda. That's how we've been operating for a few months now, and it seems like that's kind of where recusals fit. We didn't previously call out when recusals would occur during a council meeting. But that's a proposal now to sort of ratify that practice that we've had recently. Further down on the page, at the bottom of that page, under C7, appointments, and this concerns appointments of ex officio members or city representatives to other bodies. And it simply, again, clarifies the current policy. But what I want to, do want to do with respect to this is point out to you that another omission that we had, that I, I had, as I put together the revised council rules for January, was a discussion of appointments of members to advisory committees. And that probably warrants a bigger discussion that relates to the future discussion we have planned for change, sort of refinements to our commission policies. So just a reminder that we can make this change. We'll probably come back and want to add another section to, to the council rules regarding appointments to advisory bodies.
So by that, just really quickly, so I, I have a clear understanding. What you're saying is appointments of counselors to advisory bodies where they might be taking a vote on behalf of the council. Is that what you mean by that? Like, for example, RV cog, the representative to RV cog actually votes for, is that what you mean by that?
No, that, that's what's included in this change.
Okay.
That takes care of it. But in terms of appointments to members of advisory committees, not appointments of council, council members, but members of the public to advisory committees. There seems to be continuing source of confusion about how that occurs. And we do have a standard process for that. But I think as we talk about our commissions and their possibilities for appointing council members, excuse me, appointing public members to advisory bodies, clarifying how that works and when, when an advisory body becomes a public body and when it doesn't.
I see.
So that's kind of a separate conversation that does relate to our whole future conversation that we've got on the look ahead for changes to our commission policies.
So are you basically saying that we're just going to take the appointment policy and put it in the council rules? We do have an appointment policy to committees and commissions.
Yes, we, yes, that's what I'm proposing.
Yeah, that makes, that sounds prudent.
Yeah.
Counselor Panemroff.
Yeah, I have some concerns about this one in terms of what the, what I found in the charter and some of the committees. Should I, should I bring those up now or should I wait till Dave goes through all of them?
I would suggest bringing it up now.
Okay, if, if I may. So I'm interpreting this to say other liaisons to city committees don't require the confirmation of the council. Right? That's what we're, that's what the red line is changing. It's just up to the mayor, coordinated by the mayor. So that would be city committees. So for example, the Urban Forestry Committee. If you look at the ordinance, the founding ordinance, it says the members are and, and I think, okay, the members are approved by, the membership is approved. And I think also the liaison is appointed by the mayor and the council. Actually, now that I think of it, I'm not positive. That's true. But the other thing, and I'll look it up to make sure, the other thing, though, is about the, the charter in section 22 under committees and commissions. It says the mayor and council shall appoint, number one, members of committees and commissions established by council, and two, other persons required by the council to act in an advisory capacity to the council or its appointed committees and commissions. And so I'm wondering if that could be interpreted to be a liaison pointed to a committee. Is it in a sense advising that committee because they do ask questions, you know, about procedure and stuff like that? So I, I don't have, I'm, I'm not objecting to this in, in terms of changing our process. I'm just afraid it might be out of sync with the charter and I'll have to go back and double check what I was looking at with urban forestry.
I do have some input. So with respect with the liaisons, liaisons are not, are not engaging in deliberation. They're not engaging in the advisory process. Liaisons provide communication to and from as a means of good communication, but also if there is, if there is advice, it's on process or procedure. Um, if there is advice, it's on process or procedure. Um, so liaisons. On some level forfeit. Um, well, I don't know if they forfeit, but, uh, liaisons should not be. And they're not called upon to engage in deliberation on advisory matters.
Sorry, I just remembered what I looked up about urban forestry. I think they refer to it as an ex officio and not a liaison. But let me, like I said.
I, I have that section.
Do you have that?
About the membership. Yeah, I'll just. Read the whole thing if I may. Section three, membership compensation. The urban forestry committee shall consist of five members and two alternate members to be appointed by the mayor with the consent of the city council. Two members may live outside the city limits of talent. Committee members shall receive no compensation. A city council member appointed by the mayor and agreed to by council shall serve as the council liaison to the committee.
Okay, that's what I read and couldn't remember. Thank you.
Shouldn't. If I could, I want to acknowledge that while Dave's, uh. Making this presentation, the errors are all mine. Um, I think for the purpose of this discussion, maybe the cleanest thing for this. For this, uh, document at this point is to just leave it appointments, council. Of approval of appointments and not worry about exactly which ones. Uh, that may include since we may have some conflicting, uh, standards and bylaws versus charter.
I also want to point out just for, just for clarification that, um, the count, the charter or policy does not require council consent for liaisons. Um, for the positions of liaisons and on, on s- some level. Um. I, I think creating a policy for that would be a little bit onerous, given that this is really just a communication. And, uh, communication position and, um, it's usually, our practice has been for as long as I can remember, twenty five years maybe. Um, to just poll everybody, see who wants to, who's interested in what, and then, and then just make those. Um, we just, um, appoint those. Um, positions by way of the consent calendar. So I mean, but it does, it's not required. Uh, according to the charter because they don't operate, they don't function in an advisory capacity. Counselor Perry Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I think it's like, usually that's just like old ones a year, kind of a council. And I think my confusion is the same. I think I, I was confused about this because. The appointment of counselors to committees and commissions feels a lot different to me than appointments of community members to. That's why I was confused by this section.
I think there's also exceptions to that. Um. Where we have appointed. You know, like a liaison to a project. Um, and in those cases, we. We, we discuss it and, and it's, it's an exception. But we have the authority to do that. So is there any recommended change to the language here that I think, can you just reiterate the recommended change of the language, Alex? Cause I think we will just.
Um. I think, I think perhaps, uh. Or simply leave it at appointments, council approvals of appointments. Um, I, I guess it should. As I say that, I realize that that's a point in time where the mayor often also announced those appointments that, uh, may, that are the mayor's function. So. Mayor, mayor and or council approvals of appointments may be sufficient since.
I think it's mayor and council.
Yes.
Without the word or.
And the charter says mayor, so, um. I, my proposal to you would be appointments period, mayor and council approvals of appointments and, and leave it at that.
Sounds good. All right.
Okay. With that, um, tentatively agreed. Change, it's, uh, moving on to page sixty four. The next change is in item eleven. This is C eleven. Um, where. Um. The, the, uh, two changes are actually proposed. One is to move this item. Uh, so it is after special, uh, special presentations in the agenda and before public hearings. Um, and the, the thought there is, uh, to relieve department heads from having to. Wait through a whole meeting to make a brief report to the council. And the other change then, uh, is, uh, to, to change the content a, a little bit. In the current rule, it set out that there, at one of our meetings each month. The city manager makes a report and then the other meeting, uh, each month. Our heads make a report to the council. The idea is let's just combine those. Yeah, uh, and if there's reports to make. Both, both the city manager, the, uh, department heads make them. If there are not any reports to make, we just move on. So that's, uh, that, um, is, uh. The change on. Uh. Item eleven and item twelve, uh, excuse me, item thirteen on that same page under other business. The, um. The addition there is to, um. Allow. When there's a, a matter that is an endorsement or a letter of support that is urgent. Uh, that it can be dealt with. Uh, immediately at a meeting instead of waiting to, uh, discuss it under other business at a future meeting. And finally, the other proposed change.
Can I, can I make a comment on that? And I hope I'm not being wishy washy because I know I, I've said this before. Um, I mean, I've talked about this before, but. What is, what would be the difference between just. Approving through the council rules, the ability to just add the item to the agenda rather than. Putting it under other business and future agenda items, which seems to have a little bit of different meaning in my opinion. Like, it seems to me like. It would be more accurate as an, as an agenda item under new business. And, and. Yeah, I support the idea of putting in the council rules because we're saying right here and now that we're approving. Uh, urgent items being added to the agenda for consideration like legislative items and letter of support, but. But why? What would be the difference between putting that under new business? And approving that tonight or other business and future agenda items which have a little bit of a different meaning?
Um. I can't think of a good explanation.
I just, I think it's more accurate to put it under new business, like by maybe seven degrees, but it.
I, I think this proposal was just, uh, a legacy of the history of where the discussion came up.
I, I think I caused that legacy a little bit with some of my, uh, back and forth on this thing, but, um. But I do think it's probably more accurate under new business. Uh, remember, I mean, Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, I, I want to agree with you on that. I think it, it is cleaner to do it under new business. Um, if it's urgent. Um, so I guess we're saying if people agree, just leave thirteen alone.
Um, the, and I don't, th- these are your rules. So, um, I, the, the substantive thing that this was intended to capture was my understanding of some of. Your discussions where the preference was to put items on, to put items on future agendas unless they were urgent. Um, so if, if, um. So I, I don't, I don't know that that needs to be in your rules, but that, that was, that, that was the primary motivating factor of including anybody, which.
I totally appreciate that. If for no other reason than to clarify for public that, that we, that we, that we are approving that practice as allowed by law. And, um, I mean, we don't need to say that. I think it says that just by, by this fact, but. But I, I, I appreciate that language for that purpose. Councilor Panamara?
I mean, I think we can, um, I like the idea that we make it clear that this is an allowed practice. Maybe just tweak what we have here because most of it still plays, uh, proposed and their support or the canopy. So it is, it is for those kinds of things. Except if it's urgent, instead of maybe included in other business, say maybe placed on the agenda as a new business. Um. Is that?
Mm-hmm.
Cause I, I like that we say that. I had a, a thing on an earlier one as well.
Uh, you want to go back?
I just wanted to make a comment for that.
Okay.
Um. On the reports, um, the way they were staggered every other week. Um, if I remember, I think one of the reasons that we had asked for that was trying to take the burden off of, um, staff. That they don't necessarily have to go to every meeting, that it could be every other meeting. But I think with the idea being that they make the reports when it's necessary to make the reports. Um, I, I think that's preserved, that, that concern for, uh, not making it too onerous on staff is preserved. So I would say I like the change a lot. I think it, it's easier to, um, follow up.
Also, just as a reminder that our practices that the reports are submitted in writing and the only purpose for having a, uh, staff attend. Would be if there's questions. Right? Yeah. Okay.
If, if I may, I think the, um, i- if the practice would be to use the approach the mayor suggested that it may make sense on page sixty one. Section three F that speaks about adding or removing, uh, items from the agenda to add a line. Generally, the expectation is that items will only be added in this way if there is an, or if they're an urgent matter. I, I, I think that's true of all changes, not just letters of support and, um, endorsements. So maybe that's the better place to address it.
And just not to be so specific, but just say urgent matters. Yeah.
I just, I, I. Want to raise a question about that. So it does seem like there are times when. Matter may not be urgent, but particular council leader, councilor, uh, wants to make sure it gets on the agenda anyway. And having to qualify for the definition of urgent might. Uh, get us into. You know, kind of pointless world. So I, I, it just seems like our practice has been to allow any councilor to say, I'd like to add an agenda. And, uh, also then can decide if it wants to, it's urgent or not, or, uh, as some other reason for, for. Being on the agenda for that night. That could be equally, uh.
So given that that language is in another section, is it even necessary to change this one? Did I understand Alex right?
Um, I, I think, I think where we're at is we, we're all agreed that there, there's no reason to make any change to thirteen. Um. And that, um, and then I think the, the question, uh, that Dave is raising is, is there, um. Is it more, are, are you binding yourselves unnecessarily by restricting changes to the. Uh, changes to the agenda to have, uh, some basis of urgency?
Anybody have any input on that? Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, I wouldn't want us to be stricter than Oregon law, which says you, the, the body has every right to, um, add to the agenda at a meeting.
Okay.
So as however, I got, I'm a little lost on what we're changing and what we're not changing. But I agree with the sent sentiment there. And I, and I want to, I think it's good to have it explicit.
Well, with respect to C thirteen on page sixty four, I think. Uh. I think you had proposed, Councilor Panamara, changing it to the. Suggested added wording to be, um. Placed on the agenda under new business. Um. And we could either do that or we could just not change thirteen at all. And I think that's what. Alex was suggesting this possibility.
But I think Alex also suggested changing something further up to cover that.
So, so I, to, to, I'll, I'll share, I'm fairly confident that we're, about where we are. I, I'm pretty sure you all do not want to change thirteen. Um, I think the, uh, the spirit of the reason that, that, that that addition was made at all. Was that you all had had conversation about, um. Tackling those kinds of things, adding those, um, even if they weren't on the agenda, only in cases where there was some urgency. Um, but if that's not the general, I mean, if. It seems to me that that would apply to any topic, but, um. Clearly the rules, um, require the majority approval of the council to change the agenda. And that may be, that may be plenty sufficient. And if that's the case, then I don't think there's any, any need for a change on page sixty one either.
I just want to say that I, I had given some input about this previously and it's probably where, where you're getting some of this, Alex, and just that I had personally. As just one person on, on this board, I had strong feelings that. If it wasn't urgent, that it should be included on other business for the purpose of planning it on a future agenda item. That does give our community a chance to develop comments if they want to. And so I don't have. Um, I, I appreciate not wanting to be stricter than Oregon law. I just want to say for the record that I, I do believe that. Um, for the. Yeah, for the benefit of our community and having full access to items that would be part of a regular discussion. I do appreciate. The idea that it would only be for urgent, urgent time sensitive matters that could not be put on. A future agenda and be held, held, uh, be discussed in a timely fashion. Um, but I, uh. Yeah, that's just a differing opinion. Councilor Panamara?
So, yeah, and I think I, I differ with you on that. So just to say, so, um, on F, it says subject to Oregon meeting law. At the beginning of any meeting, city manager or the mayor or any council member may add or remove an agenda item by obtaining. Express approval from the majority of the council present at the meeting. So I think if this body were to say, think of that as, ah, that's something that you should propose under other for the next meeting, that would be. Discussed, uh, um, at the point where the person was asking for that to be put on the agenda. And that could be for anything, not just. A letter or something like that. So. To me, it covers it.
Yeah.
And, and I think your.
I just, I just wanted to clarify in this discussion where that came from and yeah, so.
Okay, moving on, one more, and that is on page sixty seven. Uh. Under section five B. Um, we have, I think now moved to the practice of having a roll call vote on every type of vote. Um, and that just reflected by, um. By that minor change in, in that item. So to sum up. I believe. Somebody's going to need to make a, a motion to approve. Um, a resolution. Uh, adopting. These changes with some modifications to what is proposed in the written, uh, packet. Um, and those are. Uh. In, uh, item C thirteen. Um. Not making a change there after all. Leaving the language as, as is. And in item. Uh, C seven. Uh, saying the mayor and council shall approve appointments. And before we move on, then there's one other change and that's in the resolution itself. Uh, this is proposed resolution twenty twenty five, uh, dash one twenty three R. Um. Uh, w- we inadvertently left off, uh, something after now therefore be it resolved. Um, and that is that previous resolutions establishing council rules of procedure, including the one we adopted last January are here. last January are hereby repealed. We just need to do that um, for clarification of future people looking, trying to find the appropriate council rules. So you have in front of you a revised version of the proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash one twenty-three R.
Without the language about the repeal that we need to add? Like, are you saying that we need to add, is this resolution that's before us tonight on page fifty-five of the packet accurate the way it is?
The one I just handed out to you is accurate.
Understood.
Uh, the one on page fifty-five doesn't have that item about repealing the previous related resolutions.
Got it.
Um, question?
Councillor Panamara?
Thanks. Wasn't there a third change? Didn't we decide uh, not to do the last, the thing under other?
That, that was the C thirteen.
Yeah. Oh, that was C thirteen. Oh, sorry. I thought we were top to bottom. Okay.
So then we would be adopting this resolution as amended. And um, and then do we, and do we need to name the, the changes in the motion?
I think you, I think you do need to um, identify the changes in the motion. Hopefully councillor
So for the person that is, yeah, thank you. For the person that's going to for the person that's going to make the motion, it's C seven, changing it to mayor and council. It's C thirteen, no change. Uh, contrary to what was proposed. And in the resolution, it's in addition to now therefore be it resolved, item two is uh, repealing previous rules.
Okay, and I should read that as well? Okay.
All right. Uh, any further questions or comments? Thank you again, Dave, for your hard work on this, this great set of council roles. Councillor Panamara?
I move to enact resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-two-three dash R, amending council rules of procedure governing the process to be followed in the conduct of city business with the following amendments. First, C thirteen, uh, no change. Second, C seven to read, the mayor and council shall appoint. And third, that the resolution itself be amended to include a second paragraph after um, therefore be it resolved as follows, which reads, number two, all previously adopted resolutions establishing council rules of procedure, including resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-zero-five dash R are hereby repealed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to um, enact resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-two-three dash R, amending council rules of procedure governing the process to be followed in the con, uh, in the con- conduct of city business to include uh, amendments, C thirteen, uh, no change. C seven to read, mayor and council shall appoint. And then the addition to the resolution itself, uh, under now therefore be it resolved, item number two, all previously adopted resolutions establish, establishing council rules of procedures, including resolution twenty twenty-five dash one-zero-five dash R are hereby repealed. Is there any further discussion?
If I, I may just make one clarification for uh, the folks doing the minutes that uh, when we refer to C seven and C thirteen, we're talking about section three, C seven and section three, C thirteen.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councillor Colley?
Yes.
Councillor Panamara?
Yes.
Councillor Medina?
Yes.
Or Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight point four is approval of the council discretionary funds for access food pantry use of the talent community center facility. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, uh, staff understands that uh, council would uh, is interest has two high uh, important values to uh, implement in the uh, the question of where the food pantry will take place this summer when the temperatures get high. And that, uh, th- those two values are, you all really want to see that moved inside for the benefit of the patrons and the volunteers. And two, do not want to do that without viol- uh, by violating uh, sort of the city's principle of cost recovery on the uh, on the building, the, the community center. Um, and staff are proposing we square tho- that circle or uh, uh, resolve that contradiction by uh, using council discretionary funds to uh, pay the room fee for the food pantry.
All right, any questions? Any comments? Councillor Panamara?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, um, I think one of the things that is important to me as, you know, the deadly heat um, we've experienced in previous years, uh, as we become at risk for that, is this is, this is predictable. Um, that this is uh, something that our residents can count on um, to, to, to meet their needs and, and as well as um, you know, the folks providing the service. Um, I just want to say I'm appreciative of the idea that, you know, there could be grants to support this. Um, access could certainly kick in the money. Um, but uh, if, if that doesn't happen, I, I just don't want to leave that up to chance. So that's why I'm, I'm supporting this. Um, I think it's a good use of our, of our discretionary funds. But I do actually, uh, I, I thank you, Alex, for pointing out those two values because um, continuing to uh, not to, to have these services kind of support themselves is also an important value. Thanks.
I just want to add that um, I I did suggest this change, uh, not, and, and I'm, I'm mentioning that because it was for the purpose of uh, this being a replacement for looking for grants. Not that I don't want to look for grants and not that I don't think I could crowdfund this in a New York minute. I think I could, but that um, that this would actually take the place of um, of grant funding for this predictability, this ability. We saw last time that as the the temperatures raised and they had to, they had to, the temperature rose and they had to cancel. They had really no time to make any changes. And so it was, uh, it was not a plan that would work anyway. Um, and uh, again, this, this would be in the place of, of grant funding or crow- crowdfunding. Um, I also want to mention that it's important for us to um, be and I, I'm going to talk a little bit about this on other as well, that, that when the council wants to donate or contribute towards an effort, that one of the considerations I think should always be considered is that it comes from the council discretionary funds. And that's why we, we build those funds in the first place. Um, so I, uh, I will probably continue to remind the council that those funds are available for these kinds of donations that we, that we want to make. Um, but uh, yeah, this will, let's clarify that this will replace any efforts to, to grant to, to, to fundraise. Sorry. Councillor Panamara?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I am remembering the origin, where this originated, and I wanted to thank you for bringing that up because it, it didn't occur to me as, as a possible source. So thanks for that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm glad you feel that way because I thought I'm going to go after those discretionary funds.
Well, I, I, can I ask you another question? Does the council, because I was I was thinking there was a, a, anyway, is there a separate dollar amount that's a separate budget line item that's available to council members to um, attend uh, to trap for travel and training?
I'm going to put that on other. I'm going to put that on other.
No, we, we put it in the budget, I think there was.
Yeah, well.
Oh, I shouldn't ask that now. Okay.
Um, so is there any further questions or discussion on this?
Uh, member Medina has her hand raised. And I also have something after her.
Yeah. Uh, member, can you, is she?
I'm here.
Yeah, there you are.
Um, so I like the idea of, yeah, you know, always pursuing something, some sort of grant or you know, I'll asking, like in this case, it would be appropriate to ask, ask access? Sorry, I can't speak well. Um, to help sponsor, but we've already had one um, cancellation of the food bank. And I don't know how long it would take for access to respond to us. And I think it's appropriate for this summer for us, if we can use the discretionary funds to help keep the food bank open over the summer. Especially since we're like moving along with the resource center.
Thank, thank you, Councillor Medina. Councillor Perry Miller?
Thank you. Um, yes, I think this is a wonderful use of discretionary funds. And then we did bump it up a little bit, so cushion. Um, so I, I agree with this allocation. Um, I did also just my unders- A and B are actually forty dollars an hour. So I think that the amount might be for a nonprofit. But I just wanted to clarify that. And I only know that because I've the community center so many times.
Thank you.
And is this, I, I don't mean to get uh, granular since it's only fifteen hundred bucks, but is this an in-kind contribution to access that, that we can notify them of?
I don't see why, why not, we, that we couldn't phrase that in that way? Absolutely.
Are we concluded? Uh, do you need any action on this?
Um, I am requesting a resolution just to make clear that uh, we're, I'm sorry, a motion just to make clear that we are uh, going to make use of the discretionary funds.
Page seventy-three.
Yeah, here we go. Um, all right. So I'll entertain a motion, Councillor Colley.
I move to direct staff to use council discretionary funds to pay for food pantry use of rooms A and B at the community center through September and to direct staff to secure a use agreement with access, the sponsor of the food pantry.
Second. We have a motion and a second to use discretionary funds to pay for the food pantry use of rooms A and B at the community center through September. Is, was, was that the extent of your motion?
Uh, the B, B part.
I just, uh, didn't remember hearing that. Direct and B, direct staff to secure the use uh, agreement with access the sponsor of the food pantry. Uh, any further discussion? Councillor Panamara?
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing. Um, is that by making this a sure thing throughout the summer, I think we're, we're helping that, that reliability rather than like, let's, oh, let's see what the temperature is. Maybe they use it, maybe they don't. Maybe it's reserved, maybe it isn't. Um, I like the predictability of it and I hope, and I hope that will serve to make sure that the service is predictable and does reach our residents.
Any other comments? Roll call please.
Councillor Colley?
Yes.
Councillor Panamara?
Yes.
Councillor Medina?
Yes.
Councillor Perry Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is city manager report, the police department report. Steph?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a few updates on the human resource uh, front. We do, are going to be interviewing candidates for the finance director position uh, Friday and uh, early next week. Uh, we have several, several viable candidates with public sector uh, finance experience. So I'm hopeful that we may, we may be successful with the first round of searching. Uh, we will shortly be also an uh, issuing a job uh, opportunity for a maintenance worker. Uh, Doc, who has been a steadfast uh, member of the, of the team is retiring and uh, we need to replace him. And uh, I, I would also mention that the, the harvest festival work group met for the first time this week and I think gave some excellent input to the city manager and uh, uh, on what the harvest festival might look like. Uh, skate park uh, construction continues. Uh, they continue to be on uh, on track, on, on schedule. And the AMI uh, advanced metering infrastructure project uh, kickoff meeting was this week. Um, they are going to be doing tests, uh, test installations next week with um, with essentially uh, unoccupied meters, just to get their, their process down. But folks should expect uh, to start seeing hang tags towards uh, at the end of next week for uh, installations in about two weeks' time for, or about ten days from now will be the first, uh, the first installations going in. And folks can expect a, an interruption in their water service in about fifteen to twenty minutes. And uh,
Councillor Colley?
Yeah. Yeah, they're all done. I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, just about the org chart on the, for the maintenance worker, if I understand correctly, in the past uh, the previous maintenance worker was working under the finance director, which might have been a more unique scenario. Is the new maintenance worker going to maintain that with a new finance director? Or are they going to work under public works or something else?
Yeah, well, I, our plan is to transition it back to public works, uh, where it has traditionally been and um, and in part because that's where it had been previously, but also in part because um, we want to um, Doc was providing some cleaning services as well. We are currently bidding uh, those clean, cleaning services. We think that those could be uh, done uh, more affordably. And then the other half of this person uh, would then be available to do um, parks and public work, assist with parks and public works.
Efficient.
Okay, uh, police report? Anything to add? Okay. Um, want to thank you again for these neat reports. Um, I really appreciate them. And Councillor Panamara?
Yeah, I just had a question. I wanted to say thanks for the um, the several months of statistics. I, I really like, I think that paints a more complete picture. I just had a question on what a subject stop is. That's not a traffic stop, I take it. That's separate. Is that like a person stopped but not charged?
Yes, is it so? Okay. Um, so that would be just a contact that an officer has with somebody. I mean, they're walking down the street and they want to engage in conversation with them. It's, um, oh, so if somebody stops the officer, not the officer stops them. Um, generally, it's either, it can be both. Basically, an officer stops to talk to somebody and they what you have to do is check out with dispatch anytime you, you know, leave your vehicle or you're making contact with people. So there would be, that's what's called a subject stop.
Okay, yeah. Um, and then just one other, are there, is there like overlap on some of these things? So like a certain incident might actually show up as twice in this list?
Actually, no. Um, in looking at these numbers, so um, I just want to really let you know that these are the calls that come into dispatch. So um, it sometimes will take time for stats. So, so our annual stats are the more accurate stats of the reports, the arrests. Um, this is accurate as far as when it says seventeen arrests in sites, that is accurate. Um, versus, you know, ten people that were, out of the seventeen, ten people were taken to jail, the others were cited and released. Um, so these call volume stats are calls into dispatch. And if the officer doesn't change the disposition before they clear that call, it's going to stay. So uh, for example, you know, um, a domestic dispute, if it's dispatched as a domestic and they clear it as app, and it was really just a civil argument? That makes sense. Um, if they don't change it, it'll still be a domestic dispute as the call. Um, because you'll see the DWS, there's, there's zero across the board, but a traffic stop doesn't record that they were driving while suspended because it's just an infraction. It would if it was a crime. I know it's kind of convoluted, but um, again, these stats are the means people call and then the officer initiates them.
Okay, so uh, uh, one incident will get one label that'll put it in this chart somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, and that might change from where it was originally. Okay.
Yeah, so like, um, you know, maybe we respond to somebody that's suicidal. We put a police officer involved on them, but they also have warrants. So at the back end, there'll be a stat for warrant and a stat for police officer. So at the back end, there'll be a stat for warrant and a stat for police officer. But in the initial call, that's just one, um, one call.
Thank you for explaining that.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Next item on the agenda, agenda is commission and committee reports. And commission and committee reports?
Did we do this last time?
Um, well, it's on the agenda, so I'm just remembering the agenda.
I think it's been on, I think it's been on the agenda every time recently.
Yeah, but I think, I think you're right, last time we went really late, so maybe we bounced around. I have a T-PAC report, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Dave for helping with the Sarah Burns Local Artwork uh, donation saga that has been, um, going on. Uh, T-PAC is really excited about that, and that work will, um, eventually be in the community center. And then, uh, T-PAC is really excited to be partnering on the OSTA project. Uh, they'll be at the kickoff event next Friday. And, um, helping to, uh, work on some art criteria for different projects for OSTA and for the city. So they'll be bringing some code recommendations, um, soon, and then they will also be bringing a recommendation to council in the future for, uh, potential artwork on the Talent Historical Society Museum. So that is a preview.
Also, um, just is there, um, I think I saw it on the look ahead some discussion about uh, the murals, the public art projects of the, the public art murals, is that, is that? Should we be timing that?
Well, so I remember last time, I think it was last time, there was a request that T-PAC come up with a recommendation for that. But they just haven't met yet.
Okay, so they'll be talking about that at the next meeting?
Yes, they just haven't met since that conversation happened at council.
Got it.
So, yeah.
And they'll be making that recommendation to Tura?
They're gonna be making all kinds of recommendations to everybody, yes, but I think for the, for the murals, it would be to Tura.
Yeah.
Because it was a Tura project.
The grant, yeah.
Unless there's a reason for it to come to council, like it's quicker because we meet twice, twice a month. I don't know. We can figure that out.
Councilor Colley?
Can T-PAC make a recommendation to Tura? Is that within their? Or did they make recommendations to council? Just to clarify our. Maybe Tura needs to give the murals to the city, and if they can make a recommendation to the city.
I think, I think what the T-PAC can make a recommendation to council
Yeah.
to retrieve the murals for the purpose of blah, 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 I think it could look like that. Any objection there, gentlemen? Okay, all right. Um, but they're currently being stored, uh, or they're, they're, they're going to be stored. Yeah, okay, got it. Um, all right, thank you. Any other reports? Councilor Panamara?
Thank you, um, so Rogue Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, had a, a couple of meetings. There was just recently a technical advisory committee meeting, we're gonna thank our Alex Campbell, who did a great presentation on the Creole project. Um, the city of talent is competing for, uh, CMAC funds of which there are, um, ten million currently available. Um, there are other projects that are also competing for, for those funds. These are funds that can't be used to anything that increases capacity. They have to do with air quality. Um, there's also, uh, at, at the last policy committee meeting, um, couple of jurisdictions have, um, brought back projects that were awarded, uh, in twenty fourteen. Um, uh, Central Point has an ask for, uh, seven million for a project that wasn't completed. Um, they had a lot of troubles, uh, lawsuits and, uh, some difficulties. And, um, so, but now they're ready to proceed with a project on, uh, West Pine. Um, their ask is seven million. Um, Medford also has a previously awarded project that needs, um, just under two million, between one point five and two million as well, so the policy committee will be, um, deliberating next week on whether, uh, those previously awarded projects should be made whole. Should be given, uh, some of the money that's available now, which could leave as little as one million. Little over a million or even nothing in what's available to projects to compete now. So that's, um, something for the policy committee, uh, to, um, decide and that's where we're at. And anything?
Nobody comes to these meetings, these meetings have very little public interest.
Because they're so riveting?
Yeah, I, they're, it's big money though, so.
Any other reports? Um, my, um, my report is that at the planning meeting, we talked about, uh, definitions for, um, dining and eating establishments for the purpose of um, supporting, uh, economic development as we move forward, uh, and clarifying some points. Uh, and then, um, there's also discussion about, um, uh, consideration of, uh, text amendments to the talent comprehensive plan and municipal, uh, municipal code. Um, proposing changes to the comprehensive plan, um, for infill and development. Um, and then also proposed changes to the talent municipal code, uh, eighteen zoning, including definitions to the commercial zone, central business district. I think it was all about the overlay, uh, mostly about, uh, the climate friendly area overlay and how that will impact most of our codes, uh, if, and to potential directions that we could go in. Uh, the next, uh, plan, there's a planning meeting coming up. Also, RV cog. For me, uh, the next meeting will be next week, so I'll be able to report out at our next meeting about, uh, what's happening at RV cog. All right, I'm moving on to item number eleven, other business. And I have, um, a cou- I have a, a couple of things, um, so I can start if no, if nobody else has started, and then we'll do the look ahead. Um, okay, so as I mentioned earlier about the discretionary funds, um, wha- what I'm really trying to, uh, get at, and I think would be worth a conversation for a future agenda item, is generally cost recovery on public spaces. Um, and so I know that, you know, when we had a discussion last year, um, about uh, when we got a report last year about, um, the kind of the losses that are occurring in our public spaces, one of the discussions we had was um, talking a little bit about the city's use of the spaces and how that's not being tracked as part of as, as part of the, you know, revenue stream, I guess would be the way to put it, as part of the, uh, accounting for the impact. Um, so in addition to, um, wanting to make sure that when the council is considering contributions of space or other contributions that have a financial impact for our community, recovering those costs through the discretionary funds is one of the proposal, uh, one of the proposed ways to recover. Uh, additionally, I would like to see us, um, make a policy that the city tracks and recovers the cost of our public use spaces, including, um, meetings and um, and then any like, um, I think when I talked to Tessa, we were talking about like if there's a police training that comes from the police budget, it gets built into the police budget and it comes from the police budget. But it allows us to really get a much more accurate picture of exactly how, um, how, you know, where are the areas that we could improve on, uh, cost recovery for our public spaces, if everything's being accounted for. Where are the areas that we could, uh, we could improve on? Um, I recall that the last report that we got was that we were losing forty-five thousand dollars a year on this building alone. I would only want to see uh, us look at that number again, once we've had an opportunity to to account for all of the impacts to the building. And I hope that we do that again in the near future, so, um, I don't know, do we need to talk about that on future meetings? Does everybody, do you want to get a staff report on that? I'm asking that to be a future. I'm asking both of those. Well, I don't think the discretionary funds proposition needs to be a future agenda item, but I would like to see the cost recovery or city impact to our public spaces be a future agenda item if we need to talk about it further before that decision could be made. Thoughts? Councilor Panamara?
Well, I, I don't know, I think it's, in a way, it's a no-brainer that we, that we should try, that we shouldn't be losing this kind of money. I mean, and the question is why, um, do we need to advertise more or, you know, what do we need to do to, to, so that we break even? Um, you know, I agree with the break even concept. Um, I don't know that maybe this would be part, if there's a larger conversation about budget, maybe this would just be an element of that. Um, I don't, to me, it's not complicated. It's, it might be hard to do, but it's not hard to talk about. So I don't know that it needs a lot of council time, but maybe other people disagree.
It, I will say it feels like a policy coming. So, I mean, a policy that could be drafted.
I'm, I'm not sure.
About, uh, uh, maybe a policy where, where spaces being, public spaces being utilized outside of the hall for city goods is tracked and expensed
Oh, okay.
The individual department.
Yeah, yeah, okay. To me, that's, again, that's a no-brainer, I think. Sure. That, that
Are you saying that it warrants further discussion or not?
Um, I don't think it warrants a lot of discussion, because I think it's a pretty I don't know, to me, it's a pretty simple yes.
Were you raising your hand or just flipping with me? Um, well, I mean, I, I would leave it to staff, whether or not you thought it warranted further discussion for the development of a policy or whatever, however you wanted to handle it, and then, uh, have that on a future agenda item if it does, otherwise, just implementing the change would be other options that I see. Councilor Panamara?
I, I guess the reason why I, I think it's kind of baked in is it, or it should be baked in if it already is, is like the way we talked about the attorney time. The way that gets, you kind of spread out among the departments that use it and that there's training budgets for every department. I think that this is just is in perfect alignment with that policy, so uh, the budgeting policy, so to me, it's just a couple, you know, extra lines of, I don't know that it needs a long study session or anything. I don't disagree.
Any other comments on that? Okay, I really do, uh, I hope that at some point in time we get to see the the results of that, because it was disturbing to hear that the building loses forty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, if I remember correctly. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up, and Alex, I'm, I'm, I am sensitive about the separation between council and staff and when it comes to, um, managing staff and, and creating and having the, you know, the org chart and so on. But, um, I think I, it's come to a surprise to you that I, I want to open up a conversation about the, um, re- reevaluating the need for community development director. Um, and I'm, I'm bringing it up here because I believe that's the place where I'm allowed to bring it up, um, according to our charter, you know, it says unless you're in a council meeting, um, you know, influencing city manager on this matter, this is the place to do it. Um, and I, I do have the section up just in case anybody wants to know what that is. It's section, um, twenty-three, six, I think, or nine. But, um, yeah, yeah, twenty-six, uh, twenty, section twenty-three, parentheses, nine. I, I want to pursue this anyway, in any fashion that works for everybody, but I do think there's a good discussion to have about um, the value of having a community development director as part of our organization structure and I mean, I bring it up at council level because I think, um, it's a budget amendment, or not necessarily a budget amendment, but at some point in time, it would impact the budget and changes would have to be made, but um, I feel like we one of the encouraging things that I've been hearing lately is how difficult it is to get a community development director and how difficult it is to get a finance director. And we did get some movement on the finance director thing. Um, I don't know that it will get any better for a community development director, but that's really why we made the change in the first place, that I recall. Is that Gary, um, wasn't having any luck filling that position, so he restructured the department and, uh, with the idea that the city manager would become the community development director and, and, um, and supervise it. And, um, while I appreciate his creativity, I feel, uh, I feel like for him, um, the workload was such that didn't it wasn't it didn't enable him to do the work as he had predicted, even though he was qualified to do it. He could have predicted, uh, the workload that he had and how, um, how impactful it was to not have a community development director. The conversation I'd want to have with you, Alex, or, uh, the council in you is do you feel the same about that? Do you feel strongly that that's still the right structure to use? Um, I, I know that you also have community development director, um, experience, so I don't doubt the experience piece, it's the capacity piece that I'm concerned about and, um, and, uh, and I think if, it's an important discussion to have the position of the city or not in to having a community development director, if it makes sense. So I'd want to put that on a future agenda item unless there is another way to approach this for discussion. Do you have any thoughts on that, Alex?
Uh, I would be happy to make a proposal. I, 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 I will respond with, uh, a suggestion. But I, I don't, I can't think of any way outside of a, a council discussion. Um, but I will make a proposal, a little bit, how, how to frame that.
And really what I'm asking is how do you see it at this point in time, right? Um, we know, uh, what, how Gary saw it and we know how it turned out. Um, and I'm asked, I guess I'm asking you from, from your vantage point, how, how you see it and if there's room for discussion around showing up that aspect of our and here again, I mean, it may have a lot to do with higher ability, and they come down to that again. Councilor Colley?
Yeah, given what Alex said, I'd love to see a proposal and have that discussion at a future council meeting.
Okay. Anybody else have any comment? All right, thank you, Alex, for, uh, hearing me out on that. And thank you, Council, for considering this discussion. Um, I, I have one other item, but it's not, it's, it's not critical. Is there any other, other from anybody else for a future agenda? All right, uh, should we jump into the look ahead?
That would be great, thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, and members of the council. I, the, I've given you a much more detailed, uh, look ahead this time than, than we have recently. The first thing that I don't want to forget is, um, what I, my understanding is the council practice has been to, um, not hold one session during the, uh, the summer. And, uh, if that is your, the council's preference to repeat that, I would, um, will uh, appreciate the chance to schedule it in such a way that's most helpful to your sched- to your schedules and that we're limiting the, uh, challenges with, um, quorum, so if there are, exist known conflicts or desires to not be in town for one of these dates, that would be very helpful to know.
Councilor Panamara?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be out of town, uh, for the meeting of July sixteenth.
I think I'm gonna be out of town on let me see if it even overlaps our council day. Yeah, it doesn't. Late July. Late July. Fracture. Top thirty of July. Just pass that. Anybody else? So I think um. We wanna give the staff a direction on, we wanna choose the date, let's get the meeting, so. Um, it'll either be the sixteenth, right? Any other dates to consider? The sixth, maybe, and the twentieth of August?
And uh, and He- Hector and I could certainly uh pull uh Counselor Prestizo and, and Counselor Byers and. We could return to this on July second to make a final decision.
All right. We could do that, or we could just do a doodle poll and you can just take the most popular date, really, because how impactful is canceling anything to everybody? Not very, right? Um, we're not adding anything on where everybody has to be available, but. So I would be comfortable just allowing you guys to doodle poll and then choosing a date and informing us rather than having to carry on. Does anybody feel differently about that? Okay.
Great. Thank you. Um, so uh, I, look, I'll, I'll concentrate on the nearer term uh proposals. Um, so I, I was thinking the uh study session um at the next meeting to really focus on. In my mind, one of the primary goals in our, in the, the council adopted goals is a conversation. Uh, very big picture conversation about the fiscal position of the city. What's the cost structure? Are there opportunities to address the cost structure? Are there opportunities to change revenues? But um as you all know from the budget presentations, um the, the trend, particularly in the general fund, is not good. So uh I would uh, I'm proposing to spend some time with you, talking about how, how we talk about that with the community. Um, and uh so I, I, that, that, that to me is an urgent item, I. There's. Uh, curious about the appetite to get to chronic nuisance code that's been on our list for uh, for a while to talk about. And um. There are, so I, yeah, I would really appreciate feedback on, of folks' level of urgency on getting to that.
Yeah, just for July second too, are we gonna end up having a Tura session as well to finish up the gateway hub discussion?
I was not anticipating that when I drew this up, but um I think um, I don't think we necess. I will add that item. I don't know that it necessarily has to be on the Tura agenda. Um, because I think Tura, I think you all have similar perspectives with either hat and both, both hats are, are relevant to the topic, so.
So that could be on regular session of that city council, okay?
Yeah. The, the um.
Can we, can we address the um? The.
Please, yeah, yeah.
So are you asking us if, what our, what our level of priority is for that?
Yep.
Personally, um from my view, I think it is a priority because we, we are currently experiencing chronic nuisance. And um, I feel like um we should either allow um, provide the, the police departments with the support that they're. Acting for or. Provide them with the reasons they would be given um in such a, to clear that off the plate. I think they need to be on the plan, like they're healing with right now. So m- my, my suggestion would be on the next or following agenda. And gonna see it differently? I'm not hearing anything, so.
Great, that's helpful, helpful.
I'm wondering if it's, it's too much for that session, but I'd love to maybe get an update too on just other code enforcement and. How the process goes, or how the process has been going and how that could help us refine or create or change the chronic nuisance part of the code.
What does that look like?
I don't know.
Like, does that look like um adding to the police department report?
Could be, it could be part, yeah, it could be like. A staff report, yeah.
That, that makes sense. Um, I, uh, related note, I do wanna, I, I've heard. Particularly from Counselor Panamera of um concern about uh putting items in the regular session that aren't necessarily right. Re- ready for decision. And I'm, I'm curious about the sense of the council as a whole on that. Is it, is it possible? For staff to make clear enough that an item is for discussion informational? Even if it's on the regular session, because we do, we do have. Because of the need to have a time certain start for the regular session. It, we, it, that sort of limits the amount of space that we've got in study sessions, so I guess I'm, I'm requesting. Uh permission from you all to put items that we might, we might normally think of as study session items. As new business in a regular session, as long as they're appropriately labeled to make clear that the purpose is, is, you know, a, a. An exploratory discussion.
Counselor Panamera?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, I think I get nervous when I have to make a decision and I feel like that I haven't had enough time to digest anything. Um, the, the thing about study sessions is they're, they tend to be more relaxed. Um, you know, we know no decision can be made. Um, I think that the time limitation for a study session goes. Goes away somewhat if you schedule them earlier. I don't think we have to start them at six o'clock. We could start them. I'm assuming other counselors can make an earlier time of five thirty or, or five o'clock. If that's not the case, then, then we have to think. Uh differently. But yeah, I, I think certainly we can be flexible on that. Or I could.
Good, well, may- maybe we'll include that question in the, in the poll, uh, the message that we send about the summer schedule. I think for now, um I would leave, I, I think I did give you all a fairly detailed proposal, so maybe I, I'd leave you with one question. Are there any items that we've got down here for August or, or further out that, that you all really feel like we need to get to in July? And, and as I look at them, I'm realizing that mo- most of those items out in August are items that wouldn't necessarily be right in July. A- anyway, so um. Unless there are other, other comments, I think I've got good, good feedback that I needed.
All right. Um, so. If there's no other, other item. Move my stuff around here.
Believe we'd have uh, uh, item twelve would be written communications.
Item number twelve is written communication. There are none, so this meeting is adjourned at nine oh two.